I graduated from Commissioner's School last week.
All right.
Sorry, I'm official.
Can Mr. Rankin graduate with you?
I didn't want to bring it up, but...
But we'll ask him then. We'll ask him. There's a lot of homework, actually.
There's a lot of homework.
Anyone? Anything else? Any petitions other than not item eight on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Planning Directors' report?
We wanted to mention that we're reopening five days a week now at the counter. We're getting some temporary help. So we're able to open again on Thursdays. Kurt Deschmacher, our staff person, is on the mend. Until he gets back, we'll be using some temporary assistance to keep the counter open. So we wanted to let folks know that. Also, we are looking, April 15th, the possibility of a joint work session. We're not positive on this with City Council on this case. And Ms. G will keep you informed as to whether Council has one scheduled, whether the Commissioner will be involved in that as well. We have made changes. We are going forward with the April 27th session for the public to roll out the small area plan for South Washington Street. That will be from nine to 11 at Columbia Baptist Church. We'll be getting the word out on that on the web now. And then, again, remind you to hold the first of June. We're hoping to do the kickoff for City Center Small Area Plan. We are having our work session with City Council on budget for our department this coming Thursday, along with Public Works and Economic Development. So on last Wednesday, the City Council took some action on... There was a hearing, took some action on the Harris Teeter Project, which will be coming before you all in the near future. So we're going to have a busy, a busy spring. We also are trying to put together a meeting with Mr. Tartar and two of the Commissioners to talk about the way forward on the split lot issue. So that, I think, is tentatively scheduled for the 10th of April. There's a meeting invite out, and I think Mr. Meeks, you may be on that invite as well.
And I, I didn't know it was Ted... Well, all right, you'll keep me posted. I think it's on. I think everyone accepted it.
Yeah. So, again, there is the coordination. The Commission has taken, had its listening period, and Mr. Tartar was going to take the lead from the Council and wanted to make sure that communication between him and the Commission went forward so we could get that doctored for a work session, action by the, by Planning Commission City Council this spring. That's really what I have at the moment. If you have any questions, let me know.
Mr. Snyder, as I was reading through all of these things for the reserve, I was thinking about perhaps asking, see what we can do about, about, about four things. First, looking at the code for the B1, B2 usability in those districts since this project is coming through, and then we've got the Harris Teeter one. And, but I, hopefully, we'll have some more coming up in the future and look at that and get that kind of settled in another way because it keeps getting muddled around in all the staff reports and everything that, you know, it's not very flexible, and we've had to do quite often looking at things with Pearson Square. The other thing is, is could we put the bed the 20-foot setback? We've been bouncing that one around forever and saying, yeah, we got one, but it's not.
It would be a code revision. What we have been doing is putting that in the small area plans in terms of setbacks we want on these major streets in particular. So I believe in the draft small area plan, we're talking about and citing 20 feet as the setback from the major roadblocks.
All the way around the building.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, because, you know...
So as we, as we look at that plan...
These two kind of come in, you know, with, you know, we've got the 20-foot in the front.
In, in terms of the B zones, for example, in the draft small area plan, we're talking about creating a coordinated core commercial area. And if that were placed on the land use plan, you could make a change to the B2 to have special rules for that specific area in the city.
All right. This, that's been bouncing around and bouncing around. The other thing was is that can we take ideas from the streetscape, North Washington Streetscape, and can, you know, use those as a guideline down on the south?
We have been looking at really Pearson Square as the guide here. We, we, there's some construction going on of a portion of that North Washington Street, Streetscape, and for the North Gate project. And we're evaluating how that's going, the expense versus the benefit. It's been quite expensive to do that work, particularly in South Washington, wanting to emphasize the retail and the pedestrian activity, wanting to have as much room for pedestrians as possible in one of our goals.
Right. And my last kind of is a question, but with all the hurrah in the paper this past week about the new transfer stations in Arlington, our intermodal plan will not cause all that kind of difficulty, will it?
As you saw, I think, in our last little work session, we're proposing to use, to, one, develop a standard bus shelter, which would be modest, and use that type of once chosen and acquired, using that type of facility for the bus shelter, for the plaza space. Of course, there is a lot of roadwork involved, undergrounding the utilities, but we're not looking to do the super stop that Arlington did.
Because I didn't see any, I may have missed it, but I didn't see any proposal for the price of it.
Well, I think in the initial look, there'd been talk about trying to do a custom bus shelter, but as we've gotten into it, it's, we've made the decision that we'd want to have all of the bus shelters in the city match. And the emphasis would be on shelter and, and letting people make sure they know where to go. So I think in our last meeting, when Mr. Stoddard gave a presentation and some of the examples that were shown, these were basic, attractive, cost-effective bus shelters, not, not architectural statements per se.
But I meant particularly at the, at, you know, the, the new intermodal at the, you know, with Hillwood and...
Yes, we would be using a similar stock facility for sheltering passengers who would be using that intermodal. A good portion of the cost there, however, would be involved in new curbs and gutters, street work, sidewalk work, getting rid of overhead lines and, and traffic signals. So there is expense there, but it really is involved mostly in rebuilding the roadwork and the sidewalk areas.
Because my, oh my, that set a storm over there, didn't it? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? Anything? Okay, outstanding. Old business. I believe we have none, which takes us into the exciting new business, the resolution to amend the comprehensive plan in the City of Falls Church to change the designation of 2.2 approximately acres of land at 540 and 580 South Washington. I'm going to hand it off to you, Mr. Snyder. I believe we have a presentation first, and then the public meeting.
Yes, Elizabeth Perry is going to make the staff presentation. And then I believe the applicant has a presentation as well. And then we have, I believe, some folks signed up to testify.
Thank you. Good evening. As mentioned, my name is Elizabeth Perry. I'm with the Planning Division. And tonight's purpose of the public hearing is for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to City Council on two applications for proposed development known as the Reserve at Tinner Hill. The subject property is at 540 and 580 South Washington Street. The applicant, Lincoln Properties Company, and their applicant team is here tonight. And as mentioned by the Planning Director, they will be providing an overview of the project. I'd like to give you a summary of the project and of the staff report. So in sum, the development is a building of 85 feet in height and the following uses: a neighborhood grocery store of approximately 25,000 square feet, restaurant retail space of approximately 8,000 square feet, commercial lease space of approximately 10,500 square feet, approximately 224 residential apartments, and a plaza of approximately 7,000 square feet. This project requires a special exception approval and a comprehensive plan amendment approval. The comprehensive plan amendment would change a future land use map designation of the subject properties from business to mixed use. And the special exception is required to allow residential uses on properties owned Business District and to allow a 30-foot height bonus in the B3 district. I'd like to provide an overview of the timing of the project. As you may recall, the Planning Commission had a work session on this application on the 18th of March. And that was, that work session and this public hearing is part of the City Council's referral to Board and Commissions asking for comments on this application. The Board and Commission comments are due to staff on the 5th of April, so those comments are coming in to me this week. As made by a request from the, from Mr. Meeks, we have provided the Board and Commission comments that we have received to date. So there were three that were left at the dais to you, and I also provided them to the applicant team this evening because they had not seen them either. The, the current timeline for this application has us lined up for a work session with the City Council on the 15th of April, and that's where, where we will be transmitting the Board and Commission comments, including any that you have. And this also has us on target for a May 13 City Council public hearing. And it's at that public hearing where the City Council could take action on the application. In terms of the staff report overview, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend City Council approval of the subject applications. Now that said, staff is still working with the applicant to refine the application and will continue to do so in response to Board and Commission comments and some ongoing staff analysis. And as we get more information and work with the applicant, the staff, too, is also updating its analysis. And we provided some of the updates to you in the cover memo to, in your, in your packet this evening. One of the key issues that we've been working on is transportation, and that includes the issue of parking. We've been talking about some of the details of the proposed plaza as part of this project, and some preliminary work on architecture and design, even though that is an element that is ultimately decided and finalized at site plan. It is appropriate to look at that as a special exception, as part of the special exception process. Also, special exceptions come typically with voluntary concessions. And in your packet, you're provided with the applicant's most recently submitted voluntary concessions. The negotiation of those voluntary concessions continue with the city manager. I'd like to take a minute to talk a little bit about transportation. And the staff report provided you with some of the details of some specific terminus, movements that were discussed at our March 18th work session. And as we discussed at that work session, there are two primary points of entrance and exit to this proposed development. One is on South Maple, and one is on South Washington Street. And it is, both entrances and exits are proposed at this time for full movement, so no turn restrictions on, on any of those drive aisles. And one of the key movements that staff has been looking at and that the Planning Commission wondered about were left into the site from South Washington and left out of the site onto South Washington. So we provided a table with some of the, the numbers of vehicles that were estimated to be on those drive aisles and make, make those turns during peak hours during the AM and the PM and the week, weekend. That was a specific piece of information requested. And then we also provided, as an additional point of analysis, a level of service, which is a grade basically from A through F that assesses how favorable a condition is for making a specific movement in a specific location from the site. And overall, the level of service is meeting the staff's minimal, acceptable level of service, except there is one turn movement, and that is the left out of the site onto South Washington Street, which has a level of service F at this time. However, when the traffic impact study was done, it was not done to look at whether or not other improvements on South Washington Street would have an impact on that turning movement. And one of those proposed improvements would be a signal on South Wa, at South Washington and Maple. And so some additional work is being done by the applicant to review whether or not that improvement, in conjunction with the other proposed transportation improvements associated with this project, would improve that turning movement. Staff is still recommending that the Planning Commission recommend City Council approval because if it turns out that the traffic impact study does not find an improvement in that turning movement, there are other options that we can work with, with the applicant. And if they were to agree to them, could likely mitigate that impact, including turn restrictions, or maybe directing traffic to South Maple Avenue for exits. And then, of course, if we were to do that, we'd evaluate what kind of impact that would have on South Maple Avenue. But since we believe that there are options to resolve that issue if the updated traffic study does not change that level of service, we are recommending a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission. That summarizes my overview of the staff report. I can answer questions now or after the applicant has provided their presentations.
So I just have, I don't, okay, so is that a site plan issue? When, when will the traffic, when will the next traffic study be available? Prior to the site plan or post-site plan approval?
It will be provided to staff prior to City Council review of the application, before the public hearing on May 13th, and in time for staff to evaluate what the findings of that traffic study is. So it will be decided as part of this special exception process, not as part of the site plan process.
Is that not a site plan issue? Sorry.
Well, it's not that it's not a site plan issue. At the special exception stage, we're going to look at what the impacts are. And so what we expect is that we will, at the special exception stage, put some type of restriction on turn movements or some type of condition that requires traffic to be directed in a specific way as part of the special exception, so that when we come to the site plan process, it's very clear how we're going to implement the special exception approval. If we wait until site plan, there's no way to evaluate that. Plus, a transportation impact analysis is not a requirement of a site plan. It is a requirement of a special exception because it's one of the impacts we're supposed to be evaluating in terms of determining whether or not the proposed development is appropriate.
Other questions?
Just wanted you to go through the parking issue again. I saw in the paragraph that you had reservations about the applicant proposes a sharing of 35 of the 517 spaces among residential and commercial users. Can you give me just a, a quick explanation of why that would be an issue? And also, yeah, if you can just take me through that, that'll be, that'll be good because I didn't quite understand what was going on there.
Absolutely. Our code does not have very explicit terms about how you can share parking. So the way the, the current, the application is currently designed, they have, the applicant has taken the code requirements for the specific uses that are proposed and provided all the parking that the code would require. But, so overall, the number of spaces that are required by the code are provided on the site. What the applicant is proposing to do, though, is take a number of those spaces, and instead of reserving them for a specific use, like a residential use or one of the commercial uses, they want to be able to share them, those pockets of spaces between the residential and the commercial uses. The way our code is written, it's unclear whether or not we can permit that type of a sharing. And the zoning administrator is looking into that. If it is a mechanism, then we can use that. But if it's not, there's another way of accomplishing the same end, and that is with the number of parking spaces required for two-bedroom residential units. Currently, the code requires two spaces. And in the past, in other special exception applications based on staff review that had been done previously, a 1.5 parking space per unit ratio has been supported. It's been supported by staff and it's been approved in other developments. So it's possible that if the applicant still wanted to have a scenario where they could have spaces that are available for all users, the way we could meet the code requirement would be for the applicant to request a parking reduction. But that parking reduction would be something you would have to approve of the site plan process. So the reason why I bring it up now is because a lot of times in development, parking is a critical element. And sometimes projects end up being designed based on the number of parking spaces that can be provided. So staff does not like to leave that as a site plan issue when we have a special exception application because we want to make sure that we've looked at the parking issue as, as one of the possible impacts. And especially for the Planning Commission because it will be your decision, your approval of the site plan process, as part of the site plan process, that will ultimately give them that parking reduction. If it's an issue for you, it helps staff and the applicant know ahead of time that they maybe need to do some more work. So that's why we've provided the additional information during the special exception stage. But we think that either with the zoning administrator's determination or with another mechanism like a parking reduction request, we can at least get, give the applicant a mechanism to come to you at site plan to implement the special exception.
Okay, so we can go ahead and approve the project pending this review for the parking?
Yes, because we have other special exception projects where there are parking reductions. And the way our code is written, while we look at parking as part of the special exception, the reduction in parking does not happen until the site plan process. So it's a tricky procedural element. That's why we want to make sure we do an evaluation at the special exception stage so that the Planning Commission is prepared at site plan. So that approval will not happen until site plan, but you can approve the parking as shown on, as on the conceptual development plan through the SE process.
So we can go ahead and approve it in concept, but then we can firm it up at a later date?
Correct. And part of the reason for that is that when a final engineering comes in, it may be that they may lose one or two parking spaces. But what we're hoping to do is to basically give an indication as to what, if the applicant comes to you at site plan within the ballpark of what is shown in that conceptual development plan, that they'll know whether or not that is likely agreeable to you. And staff will have been able to tell you whether or not we think that that arrangement would provide, would result in a negative impact.
One other thing I'd, I'd like to mention is we've asked the developer, and they've agreed to do a parking management plan as part of their TDM. And they've listed a number of items there, zip cars and other kinds of things that would help other people use other modes of transportation rather than solely relying on individual vehicles. But as you may know, in a building like this with a number of underground parking levels, sometimes parking goes unused in the lower basement, for example. So one of the questions is, how do you manage the parking you have? And if you go around town, you can go down to lower levels and find lots of parking that's not, not being used. Is parking reserved, for example, for the individual residents? Do they have a reserved space? Is it in the lower level, leaving upper levels or middle levels available for those who need them when they need them? Does everyone have a reserved spot, or is it, do you hunt for parking? There are lots of ways to get best use of parking spaces available. Unfortunately, in a lot of places, it's kind of, everybody cordons off their parking and guards it very carefully, and a lot of it goes unused. So we're really urging this developer, where they're mixing commercial and residential, to think about, what's the best way to get the best use of the parking so it's used as much as possible? And when you have additional need for commercial parking, it's available because it's not being parked in by residents who may have a reserved space on the lower level. You're not going to get commercial people to go down to the third sub-basement, if you will, probably. So that's something they need to think about as part of their parking management plan. What's the best strategy? We'd really, we really want to encourage the maximum optimal use of the parking so that it's available for those who need it when they need it.
Mr. Snyder, I just have a quick question. And this is just a follow-up. Ms. Perry had mentioned that, I guess, there, there's not a clear mechanism within the code. How do we change that in the future? How do we rewrite the code to give us that clear mechanism for future development?
Well, one of the things we are talking about is making changes to the parking ordinance. And we also want to do some studies and look at the mixed-use projects we have. How, in fact, are the parking areas being used? Are they fully used, or are some of them vacant? Is our parking standard appropriate? I think we'd, I think we may be able through, with the zoning adminis, as the zoning administrator looks at this more, and we hear more details about how this is handled, there may be, there may be an answer there. I think it can be done as a part of the site plan by the Commission in terms of how the parking is managed. They, they meet the parking code. You as part of look at the final site plan and them giving a proposal in terms of how this parking is going to be used, I think we'll get a chance to evaluate a more detailed plan as this comes through site plan. Ms. Perry's right in terms of saying we need to, you know, be looking at the gross numbers and, and how it meets the code presently. I think there will be a chance to look at a refined version as they get further into the site plan with this project.
Thank you.
And that would also consider the possibility of public parking there also, right?
There is parking, there is parking for the commercial area.
Right, right.
They'll be available to the public using that.
There was another little paragraph that said, be talking with officials to see if there could be any use along that line, too.
Again, I think, you know, parking is an important resource, so...
Important.
Managing it and thinking through how it will be used over the course of the day and the course of the year is, is something applicant needs to, you know, continue to work on.
Right.
Okay, got it. Developer or publicary?
I think we've, we've all met several times before, but we want to give a presentation on, on our project. I'm Richard Rose with Lincoln Property Company. And as you know, we've been working on this particular development for about 18 months. We've gone by and seen all the boards and commissions. We've met with concerned citizens. We've met with neighbors. We've met with other retail affiliates that are in, in the area. And we have, we have our own list of the concerns that we heard from them, which had to do with the transportation and accessibility, as we've talked about before, which would include the overall parking plan and the TDM, signalization along Washington Street, also some traffic calming efforts along Maple. We've, in a, in a, through our TDM promoting public transportation. Also, in our parking plan, we're looking at the areas around our property to see how to better utilize the current parking that is in the neighborhood today. Hopefully, we'll come up with some recommendations and some thoughts on that as well. We've looked at Portico Retail that was looked at for retail along, matching along Maple Street. We've talked about affordable units and how to get more affordable units within the city. We've worked on a gate, our Gateway Park. We've had several comments on that and how that should, should come about and how that end of the property should look. We've had many concerns and thoughts on Streetscape and sidewalk width and landscaping, and who's going to maintain this and who's going to maintain that. So we've dealt with a lot of those issues. And I guess, all in all, hopefully in our presentation, we'll be able to show you where we've addressed many of those issues. So with that, we'll start with a slideshow. Not enough, before, I think we've cut these lights down. Again, this is a current location, which is the SOB site and, and the Meinikee site, and also is a used car lot right here on South Washington and Maple. Again, the comic book store is not included in our development. They do not want to sell, and so they're, will stay existing as they are today. They did not want to sell, and so they're, will stay existing as they are today. Here again, this is a view looking up South Washington, seeing what we currently have. Hopefully, what we're going to see is going to change. And I'm going to let Stephanie go and talk about the park and a couple of, the surrounding area.
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Stephanie Panquix, and I'm the landscape architect for the project with Land Design. And what you are seeing tonight is the exact same rendering that you saw at the work session. However, as Richard mentioned, having been through presentations with several of the boards and commissions, we've gotten a lot of input that will be incorporated into the next revision. And I'll just share some of the specific comments that we heard. For example, this edge that is intended to be retail and commercial and ideally could be restaurants, we heard very clearly that that should be really integrated with the park. So we're looking at some solutions that could include actually kind of cutting steps back into the building to better integrate that. As you all know, the entire park is about 7,000 square feet, and it is primarily in the floodway. So we're making sure that the design of the park, of course, honors and respects the floodway requirements, but it actually creates a great opportunity for festival and event space. So we're looking at what elements, such as splash parks or landscape and seat areas, should also be in the park. An important element that we heard from a couple of boards and commissions is the name of the park. It is a gateway park to the city. And as such, there are some ideas about honoring a city or civic or historical figure in the name of the park. And also that this elevation is part of that gateway. It's not just the park and the plaza, but it's also the architectural features in the gateway. And so I'll just talk a little bit. I know you all are very familiar with where it is in the site, but it is truly an asset within many assets for the city. Its relationship to Cavalier Trail Park, its relationship to the Tanner Hill Heritage Park site, its relationship to historic trails that, there's several in the city that actually come down to this district. It's in an emerging arts district with arts, creative arts assets, such as Creative Cauldron right across from it, and just very well connected, particularly with the future pedestrian and traffic improvements to downtown Broad Street. The streetscape with, when we presented those to the various boards and commissions, we heard very clearly that wide, generous, very nicely designed and detailed streetscapes were important. And you'll see, particularly if you look on this screen, the colors are a little brighter, the commitment to have enhanced paving that matches Pearson Square on South Maple Avenue, and very nice enhanced paving on Tanner Hill and South Washington Avenue, all the way around the park. It really creates a situation where there's no back door to this building. All four sides are completely developed in regards to streetscape and animation and windows, such as the Portico Retail, the grocery store windows and outdoor cafe seating, enhanced pedestrian areas, the restaurant seating, the connection to the park. So we can definitely, you know, go over in more detail the sidewalk width, but the minimum on Tanner Hill Street, which will connect with pedestrian sidewalks to the Tanner Hill Heritage side, will be seven, just over seven feet clear. And that's the minimum. The maximum, as you go around the site, will be closer to 20. The Heritage Trail that will continue down South Washington, we're committed to incorporate historical elements and art into the streetscape. And then are looking at kind of retaining or bringing back some of the festival street ideas so that Tanner Hill and South Maple and the park can all be used for festivals and events. And I'm going to turn it over to Mark Drake, the architect, to describe the elevation.
Hi, good evening, Mark Drake. Thanks for, thanks for having us back. I'll be brief. I know you guys have seen this before. Again, this is a six-story building, five stories of housing over one story of retail and ground floor parking, and with three levels of parking underneath. As you can see from the elevations, you're seeing the storefront of the grocery store, they're loading, the housing above, Portico Retail, some seating areas, Portico Retail seating, the entry to the grocery store on South Maple, Portico Retail, loading and entry to garage, the entry to the leasing office, residential area, and again, commercial retail down here, and the housing above. See if I get this right. Again, this is the park view. You can see the large windows opening into the park, the housing above. And then as you march up, South Washington, retail, parking garage entry here, grocery store with their, with their cafe seating inside and outside, and their entry here. And again, housing above, again, the, you got large courtyards on top of the podium, which are for the residential use, or open to the south side where they get great sunlight throughout the year. There's a section, this section explains kind of, here's the grading of the site. And we have a 14-foot drop in grade from about 282, 281 over here, up to 297 or 298 over here. And you can see the build, the building steps down the site, steps down the site, and steps down the site. So we are, we are consistently five stories over, over one story of above grade space. And you can see the double-height space for the, for the grocery and their parking and parking, somewhere the parking below. Here's a view of the project as you're looking up, South Maple with Pearson over here on the left. Here's our building here. Here's our Portico Retail, ground, ground floor, streetscape facing Pearson, the park, and the building above. Here's the, the residential building above. Here's some units here around kind of the pool, active, active deck. You're looking at the two-story-high spaces of the grocery store and the parking here. They're loading and they're mezzanine. And here you are, this is now a floor below. This is a full floor of the housing, and this is the, more of a meditation, quiet activity courtyard up in here. Those are all for the residents. Here's a view, freehand sketch we did a while back of the, of the Portico Retail and the entries on, on Tanner Hill. Here's the parking. This is the Portico Retail. And here is the entry, the Maple Street entry to the grocery store. And here's Portico Retail. Kind of, these are recessed seating areas back in here for people to kind of buy, buy maybe some, some food or newspaper or whatever, and come over here and sit and read and eat. Portico Retail, again, the building above with various bay windows and balconies. Looking a little farther down the street, you can see that we were looking at this up in here. Now we're looking at the entry to the leasing area, and we're looking at the commercial retail space here with their steps and the parks right out of here, out of the way. And again, the building above. This is the night view, looking from corner of South Maple and Tanner. You can see the Portico Retail along here, seating areas out in here, grocery store. Again, the units above, with a great, great corner unit there with some, probably somebody's living room. This is the LOI that we, I think you've seen this before from Fresh Market. These are the interiors of Fresh Market. Do you want to say anything, Jack?
Sure. Yeah. Sure, thank you. The, Jack Waghorn from NV Retail, thanks for having us back. This is the, the Fresh Market in Vienna that we, everybody's seen before. Basically, one of the best small grocery stores in the country, currently on an expansion program. We're happy to have them. Our lease is going through the process of negotiation at the moment. We've had a couple of iterations through the attorneys. It continues to march on. We're currently working with the engineers and the architects to put all of the elements that the grocery store needs into the space that we have available for them, which is a little bit of a challenge, given that we're a mid-rise building with suburban shopping center tenant in it. This is, I'll let Richard speak to this, but just to, just touch on the retail, we will be actively soliciting other tenants for the retail spaces towards the third and fourth quarter of this year. We've already had indications from different retailers that follow this grocery store that they'd like to be here, although we are a little bit ahead of the curve for them because we, you know, obviously, we don't have approvals yet, so it's a little bit early for us to start leasing. But we're very comfortable and confident that we're going to lease all of the space that we have available. Richard, do you want to talk about this?
Again, you've seen this as our voluntary concessions. The school capital contribution, which is based on a certain fee per market rate unit. We are talking about undergrounding the utilities along our property, also in front of Pizzeria Orzo is one line that we'll be undergrounding there as well. We value our 14 and 14-able dwelling units at $3 million, and it's basically for residents with 60% of the median income in, from Falls Church. Our Gateway Park, which we've talked about, the traffic signal at Tanner and Washington, which we think is, is, I guess, we think it's very important to connect the two sides of Falls Church from Washington Street. And trying to get across that street is very dangerous, and we think this will be a great help. And also, we'll continue to do some traffic calming as you come over the hill there. The Tanner Hill Heritage Celebration that Stephanie was talking about earlier, the fiscal impact is, we have a, we, there's a range that we were looking at, somewhere between 600,000 to 1,000,300. And we picked the midpoint to put on this slide. We think we'll probably be closer to the 1,000,300 than, than to the 875,000. And that is a function of whether we have restaurants or, or a commercial space. And I think the way we're looking at it today and the interest we've had so far, it looks to me like we'll be in the higher end of that. As today, the net impact on the property is about 79,000 between the SOB dealership and the Meinicki dealership. So a six, even if you got the midpoint, you're a six-fold, seven-fold of what they had. Again, we've committed to grocery store, basically, the, we will have a grocery store lease signed before our exception is approved. It's approximately 45,000 square feet of non-residential use. We're doing, as we said before, environmental cleanup. There is some contaminated soils around the Meinicki dealership that we will be cleaning up. We are putting stormwater management here where none exists today, building to lead silver or, or the equivalent. We're looking at electric car stations, charging stations within the building, bicycle racks, that type of thing. And, and of course, the streetscape improvements, which I think will, will be a, will be a starting point for all of South Washington as it goes up towards Washington Street. I think at one point, everybody thought from Broad Street down would, would be where the activity is. But I think now we're going to bring it, we're going to bring it from Maple up. So we think this will be the first to, to be there. So again, we're, we're asking for your approval, recommendation for approval to the city council. On the left is what we have today, and on the right is what we hope to have in a couple of years. So with that, we're open for questions and further comment.
When will we see the materials?
The materials, I believe, are approved at site plan. And so you'll have that full board of materials by then.
Prior to that?
Right.
Ms. Perry? Public hearing, or is there anything else?
If you don't have any other questions at this time, you can open to public hearing.
So without any further ado, this is, I believe, although I'm sure you've been put through the wringer here in our fair city, and have been to a number of meetings. I think this is actually the first official public hearing this project has, has been to, if I'm not mistaken, which is, which is kind of an embarrassment, really, quite frankly. But we do have some speakers, so I'm very excited. Just going to go in the order that we receive them. The first up, I believe, is Jamie Nix. If you could step to the microphone, give your name and full address.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Nix. I'm the property manager at Pearson Square, 410 South Maple Avenue. And I have worked and lived at Pearson Square for over four years. Pearson Square offers 230 luxury condominium units that are home to over 500 residents and commercial spaces that attract thousands of visitors each year. We have some concerns about the planned reserve development that we would like to, we think that would resonate with other, others in the community as well. We have talked to the developer about loading docks, the lack of retail on Maple Avenue, narrow sidewalks, parking, and the project height and orientation. Tonight, I would like to touch upon the retail and orientation. However, I do understand that you have a detailed letter from Bob Bruffato outlining our broader concerns. As proposed, most retail will open onto Washington Street, and we feel like that's a mistake. Focusing the retail on Maple Avenue would enhance the existing retail and increase the possibility of the festival street concept will be successful. We believe that a retail presence could be achieved on Washington with large, attractive display windows, and that diners and shoppers would enjoy the quiet and safety of Maple Avenue. Frankly, we don't feel that the 10-feet-deep Portico Retail will add much to Maple, and it's just too shallow and too small for, to be used for any food service. We are also concerned about the project height and orientation. The developer's plan calls for 85-foot-tall Maple Avenue facade that will destroy the residential feel, block the sunlight in the fall, the winter, and the spring, and damage views, and reduce property values. However, we feel like this can be corrected. Pearson Square and the Reserve are both shaped like an E, with swimming pool and grassy courtyard areas with open elements. During approval, Pearson Square was required to modify its design to create setbacks and minimize the impact of a 65-foot-tall building. To comply, areas were lowered to 50 feet and courtyards opened towards the neighbors. Instead of seeing one massive facade, our neighbors see three towers separated by two courtyards. We are simply asking for similar consideration and feel that this can be easily accomplished. If the residential portion of Reserve is turned so that the courtyards open onto Maple Avenue, the street will enjoy more sunshine, the views can be improved, and the area will retain a more pedestrian feel. It will make the Reserve, which at some points can be 30 feet taller than Pearson Square, far less imposing. Instead of one massive facade, it will appear as three towers with courtyards in between. The developer has rejected the suggestion, and we feel like it short-sighted. The courtyards should open onto Maple Avenue. It worked for our neighbors, and it can work for us. We just need the developer to cooperate. Before deciding on our request, we ask that you visit Pearson Square, and while standing on Maple Avenue, envision the two possible elevations, the massive 80-foot, 85-foot-high facade proposed by the developer, or the three towers separated by courtyards requested by the residents. We currently have over 100 signatures from the residents requesting this change. We think that you will conclude, like we have, that the best solution for our neighborhood is to open the courtyards onto Maple. Thank you.
Gary Laporta.
I'm Gary Laporta, 130 Chanel Terrace in the city. And tonight, I'm representing the Chamber of Commerce. And I guess as an April Fool's thing, my notes say, "Madam Chairman," but we're going to, we'll disregard that as an April Fool's joke. We want you to know that the Chamber of Commerce has, the legislative committee has met with the developer and looked at all the aspects. We have prepared a, our recommendations for approval. They have been in draft form. I don't know if they've been transmitted to the city yet, but the difficulty is, we don't have a board meeting until next week, so we don't have the official recommendations. But I wanted to let you know that the chamber has reviewed them. We have asked some questions, and we feel confident that this will be a great asset for the city. It brings lots of amenities. The voluntary proffers, and having just received the newest, latest update to that, is very, very heartwarming. It will bring a critical mass of residents to our city to help our existing businesses. And while it's not your purview to discuss the financial aspects of it, it will help benefit our city in the financial end as well. So the, our official document will be coming probably next week, and we look forward to having another great mixed-use project up and running in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Scotts.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Rebecca Scotts, and I'm a resident of Tanner Hill. And I am not only speaking on behalf of myself, but I'm also speaking for the residents of Tanner Hill. I'd like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak before you as well. I'd like to express my concern and my request that the mix- I'd like to express my concern and my request that the mixed-use development, as well as the high density of the 85-foot building, be denied. While the residence of Tanner Hill is, is small, we're also looking at the Pearson apartments. And all we see is buildings now. We're losing the historical portion of our street. I mean, while, whereas they have the historical nature, the historic, Tanner Hill historical reservation, we're losing the safety issues as well as the historical portion of it with all these buildings. And, and that's one of the things the Falls Church has been known especially for, was for the historical destination of it. So again, we ask that you not approve the mixed uses of it, as well as the high density of it, because I live on the first part of Tanner Hill. All I'm looking at now is buildings. And it's, I like to see greenery and stuff like anyone else. That's what I, thank you.
Thank you. Velma Tanner.
I am Velma Tanner and I live at 120 Tanner Hill. I really wanted to also express my appreciation for being able to come and share some of the concerns of the community. Of course, safety being the number one concern for myself and many of the residents. Currently, the safety issue crossing, we've created, first of all, the community has really created a walkable community. We've made huge progress, I think, over the last five to 10 years of really creating a community where it's safe to go out and take tours and walk around the community. So I really applaud everyone's contributions, just not, you know, any particular group of communities come together and realize that we've got, you know, a quaint community and lots of features. And people have started to get out and work, walk a lot more, and we appreciate that. While there are plans to put a red light, I believe, at the corner of Washington and Tanner Hill, if you're a resident on the hill, you already have a problem getting out, particularly during peak hours, rush hours, trying to get out onto 29 to get to work along with everyone else. Really envisioning an additional 500 residents along with the Pearson Square that's been recently constructed. We just feel that that would, to, really to allow the density to be elevated, the 30 feet, it's going to really add to the safety issues of not just walking, but really driving when you think of 200 additional cars trying to get home. Most of us work around the same peak hours. So safety is one of the issues. While we do realize as well that there are structured parking plans, again, everyone really tries to get in and out roughly within the same timeframe. Not everyone's a nine-to-five, but there is safety issues with the two lanes of traffic currently. Although there are plans, plans to increase the usage of Maple Avenue, that's my cut-through in the morning. I live on Tanner Hill, but I will not turn, make a right onto Washington on many occasions because with the red light at Annandale Road and Hillwood Avenue and the red light at Annandale Road and Washington Street, it's all the timing. So you, if you get out there at 8:30, 8:45, you will notice that there is a backup. So as a resident, I'm already cutting across to Maple Avenue, driving past the bowling alley, going down behind the courthouse, this location, to get to the bottom of the hill and come out near the fire station to save at least 10 minutes. But, so I, I'm the one that's doing it now, looking at another 200 cars. So again, parking, parking is a challenge. I think this is a wonderful project, but we're really concerned about the height and the additional residents, you know, that the exception will provide. And then the transportation issues, lots of communities, you know, are moving to encourage individuals to use public transportation, but the reality of it is, how many of us really do that? So my, I guess my concern is really if we could keep things within the specifications or the code, I think it would help with the safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Graves Henderson.
I'm Nikki Graves Henderson. I live at 307 South Maple Avenue in the Henderson House, which will be 100 years old this year. I'm here on behalf of Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation. We have met several times with the developer and his staff, Lincoln Properties. And much to his credit, I'd like to say, or and his staff's credit, particularly Stephanie, the architect, many of the concerns that we have voiced have been considered and responded to. And that is one of the things that I'd like to bring to your attention, is that, in my opinion, this particular developer has been much more responsive than typical developers. So the things that I wanted to bring, mention is that we do realize that South Washington is a problem with traffic. I think it's been three, four years before there was an initial, there was an initial study done on the traffic down South Washington Street. Many people didn't realize that the so-called alley right next to Nationwide Insurance Company is used as a pass-through. And when I went on the walking tour with the city staff, I pointed out that that was taking place. Many people use Maple now to avoid the traffic on South Washington. And I'm not quite sure, but I have heard the figure of 27,000 cars go up and down South Washington, traveling between Falls, the outer suburbs and Washington DC. So with that being said, in addition to the lights, traffic lights, we need to implement some type of traffic calming in that area. I don't know if roundabouts would work or any other type, particular type of traffic calming mechanism, but that's a problem not only for the developer to consider, but it's a city problem as well. Which brings me to the other point that I'd like to make. There are a number of developments in the city, and I think that one of the problems that we have had in the past is that we look at things singularly. I think that this particular project gives us the opportunity to look at the overall picture and to plan smartly what we want. This area is considered the birth of the Arts and Cultural District. It has historic homes and sites that cannot move. This is where history happened. And so we are grounded there. The Henderson House, Tanner Hill, that's where history happened. We can't move like K-Marts or a grocery store, anything like that. You can't change. And so incorporating that history into the Arts and Cultural District, and in particular, the reserve at Tanner Hill, I think is more than appropriate and important, and that we continue to build on walkable community, Arts and Cultural District, but to look at the long-term picture, not just one particular aspect. And to that, I'd like to say, we need, in addition to the stoplight or the traffic calming, is gateway features, not only to the city, but things that lead to Henderson House or to Tanner Hill. Tanner Hill is like a secret. I do walking tours and I've had people who've lived in Falls Church for 20, 30 years tell me, "I didn't know that this was here." So we need something that announces, "This is Tanner Hill, a historic site that had an impact on the nation's history." The safety crossing, absolutely. I'm sure you all know that. Unfortunately, people have been killed at that location. And I'm sure that you know that Nationwide, because of the traffic, has been hit three times that I'm aware of. So it's going to take some planning and it's not all falling on, the burden is not all falling on the developer. But I support, and our board has been talking about and talking with Mr. Rose, and our support is because it's the birth, the start of a Arts and Cultural District in our city. And that if we work at white, right, rather than have another car dealership place or cars parked all over the place, or heaven forbid, another one of those payday, no, what do they call them, title loan places? That's my new pet peeve. There are like five within a half a mile in the city of Falls Church, and I don't think any of us are going in there getting those loans. Those are predatory loan facilities, and I think we should think about what we're doing wide-term broadly. So I thank you for your time. And as I said, I do appreciate the openness, the back and forth flow that we've been able to develop with this developer and his staff. And I hope that we can continue to talk and discuss the elements that will have an impact on the historic facilities and events in the area.
Thank you very much. I think that I have no more speaker slips, so if anyone else, this is your last chance. Going once, going twice, going three times. Thank you very much. I stand corrected, this is actually the second public meeting, which in 18 months seems incredible to me, but there you go, number two. The public meeting here is officially closed. I would turn it over to planning commissioners if there are questions, comments.
Well, you go and then I'll go.
I have a quick question regarding the, there was a mention of this building being too high and possibly putting Pearson Square into shadow. I know that there was a shadow study that was done. And just for curiosity's sake, did staff look at it? Is staff happy with the shadowing study? I mean, I looked at it, but not being an expert on that, I'd like to know what staff thought of it. And, you know, you could tell me now or maybe later. But...
In terms of the shadow study, we don't have any specific parameters or guidance on kind of what is or is not appropriate. So it has traditionally been just used as an informational tool as part of assessing whether or not height is appropriate and obviously creates some impacts on adjacent uses. Given that, that area in which the project is proposed could develop to those heights with, regardless of whether or not it's a actual application, it's something that the city would anticipate, but we really don't have any guidelines as to whether or not we can say it's appropriate.
But if I remember it, it reversed itself at different times of the year.
Yeah.
That the shadow would fall over Pearson and then the shadow from Pearson would fall over the reserve.
It may be useful to ask the op-ed con to run the commission through their, through that. I think, believe it does show the, the shadow progressing over different seasons and it does hit the roadway and I guess a portion of the building, but I think it may be helpful for the commission for them to review that for you if that's a question. That would be, if answered, would, would help you in your deliberations.
And I agree with that. And one thing that I'd like to see is, you know, sometimes you have these shadow studies that actually moves, almost like a, you know, like a film that moves during the day. And...
They've got that.
Oh, you've got that?
I've got that one.
You do have that?
We don't have that tonight.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Didn't bring the back one.
And I've seen those before, so I'd like to see something like that, just, just out of curiosity.
We can get that. But let me, we, we were talking about the heights in relationship to Pearson and this comment about 30 feet. There is one element that's 39 feet, which is an architectural element on the corner, and the average height above Pearson is 16 feet. And as you can see, it goes as low as 10 feet and as, and then as high as the 39 feet where that portion is. And one of the reasons, I mean, we've got, we have, Pearson's has five levels of residential and one level of retail. We have five levels of housing plus a level of retail. Our retail, which we think is vital for retail, is to have a high floor-to-ceiling height. So we're at 20-something feet, 22 feet. Pearson's, I think, is 16 feet. May have led to some of their slower leasing up, so we think that's very important to have that. So that's one of the relationships. We can go through and look at the shadow study and one, one thing, as we go through the shadow studies, we were looking at it today, and some people, you think shadow study, you think all of a sudden it turns black here and it's light here. Well, it's not. I mean, you know, it's maybe a tone, a little bit of a tone, but we can go through that. Mark, you want to go through it?
Yeah, sure. Let's see. Can we turn the lights on? Because it's hard to see with the lights. We need a shadow.
You may want to explain in this, this drawing you had up, that red line. I don't think everyone understood what that red line was.
Red line is, is outlining Pearson Square to our building. And that's what that is.
Got it.
Okay. So on March 21st, which is also the same as September 21st, because it's the equinox, here is 10:00 AM in the morning. The shadow's not quite reading Pearson, not quite reaching Pearson. Here is noon. Here is 2:00 PM. Here on June 21st, which is the longest day of the year, 7:00 AM, you can see this sun's coming from the extreme east and above the horizon, or above the equator, if you want to call it that. Then by 10, there's no shadow on Pearson. By 12, there's no shadow. Here we are, the shadow's starting to shift to the west. And by 6:00 PM, we're now in the shade, we're now in the shade of Pearson because again, the sun is setting to the extreme, above the equator to, to the west. September 21st is the same as March 21st, same three pictures. September 21st, the longest day of the year, yes, on, in the morning, we, Pearson is in the shadow. I don't know, I've never done a study to see how much of the facade is in shadow, so it might not be, might not be all the way in shadow, but we haven't done that yet. Then 12:00 PM, coming more or less moving to the, moving to the west. By 2:00 PM, it's moving into the west.
Go back to the...
Which one, do you like to go back to?
Yes. No, go back, forward.
Go back, forward.
Go back, forward. You want to go back to the March 21st?
No, go to the street view.
Oh, which one, the one we just did?
I think it's back the one I was talking, there's the...
This one?
There's your animation.
So I just wanted to note that if you go on Google, if you go on Google Street View, you go to Google Maps and you go on Street View, it shows a view of the building in shadow. And you'll see that its shadows vary. And we actually had a very lengthy discussion of the building orientation issue at the Humanities Council because of Creative Cauldron being there on the corner and that, of course, they have performances and people coming in and out. And the interesting part is, you know, the shadows vary all year round. There's sun and shade all year round. And if you look at the way the building is oriented and you put it in the context of the entire arts district, it's actually the two parks, the two amenity areas that will be green spaces, they actually are about the same level as the Tanner Hill Heritage Park. And so the ability for those two green spaces to see each other and kind of connect to the overall parks and rec and the trails within the city, we also think is really important, along with the orientation that captures the solar, best soil orientation for those two gardens on top of the building.
If you go through the sun, if you look at our courtyards through the sun, you'll see that by placing them on the south side... you'll see that by placing them on the south side, we're getting much better sun in our courtyards. They're pretty much in light, except maybe in extreme afternoon or in extreme morning, as you can see there, and again. So to place our, turn our building around and place our courtyards to the north, we pretty much put them in shade all the time, shadow all the time. You can actually see we did some of the stuff on, on, you can see how it's affected Pearson, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Lindy?
I just wanted to really thank everybody for coming out here tonight. And I've got to admit, I was a little surprised to hear from our friends over at Tenner Hill that you had some concerns, and I wish that we may have heard some of that before. But question-wise, I know that any of us would be happy to be called or come, you know, talk with you about anything like that. So I know there are concerns, you know, about height and changes in the city, but I'm sorry that you do, you know, are not feeling as positive about it as I kind of expected you to, or something or other along that line. So I'm, I was kind of sorry to hear that.
I just wanted to mention, when we did the small area plan, the kickoff meeting for South Washington, many residents from Tenner Hill were there. I don't know if some of you were there. And I remember at that point, they, we were talking about that, the possibility of the development across the street. And one of the things they said, they didn't want it to be a monolithic building, which, so I was really glad that the courtyards were on that side, because that meant the view from Tenner Hill isn't monolithic. You'll see it as sections, you'll have a break. And I thought that that was really appropriate because of all the comments that we received at that kickoff meeting for South Washington. So, so, you know, I feel for the Pearson people, they feel like they're not, you know, they're gonna, they get more of a monolithic view. But I guess our feeling was that we're talking about a mid-rise building next to a mid-rise building versus a mid-rise building with small family homes across the street. And also with Pearson, one of the reasons why it was changed is because it backs to small townhomes. So it's a very different transition. So I think that some of the logic in that is based on the transition from type of housing to type of housing. So I really felt like the courtyards need to be on the South Washington side, because we don't want the people at Tenner Hill to be looking across to more of a monolithic. We want them to get that, see that breakup. And I also have to hope that having a light at Tenner Hill, and then we also with our transportation plan for South Washington, plan a better configuration at Hillwood that will allow people to actually cross at Hillwood safely, and also a light at Maple in South Washington will actually make that street so much easier to cross. There'll actually be real crosswalks that can be used very close to those streets. Now, I don't think they're gonna help with traffic speed, but one thing about it is, as someone mentioned, that they thought there were like 27,000 vehicles and a lot of commuters using 29. Well, one of the reasons they would use 29, especially that stretch, is there are no lights. There's nothing to slow it down. So actually, the lights will help, the crosswalks will help. We're talking about some bump outs in places. When we make South Washington crossable in several different areas, it's actually gonna slow a lot of traffic down, and I think it will make it a lot safer. It may not make it faster, though. So I understand with job commute, you want to be faster, but, but as all of you, I rarely use seven or 29, because I live in the city too, and we all know better ways of going, but there, you know, so it's, but it will make it so 29 can actually safely be crossed. So I think that that's a real positive here. I just wanted to ask a couple of quick questions based on some of the comments that we got from other boards and commissioners. One from the EDA, they were talking about creating bike lanes. Now, I don't know if they meant bike lanes on 29 or Maple, and maybe Russ actually could answer. Were we looking at Maple for bike lanes in the PED plan? And I don't know, Elizabeth, do you know the answer to that?
Staff may be able to answer better, but I believe the bike lanes, any consideration, are on 29.
On 29, okay. So I don't know how, you know, they mentioned that in here. I don't know if this project, would this project, the way it's set up now, preclude bike lanes on 29, or is that a separate issue? Just.
I think it's a separate.
There's nothing about this project that we've seen to date that would preclude that. And in fact, some of the coordination that staff has been doing with the applicant is looking at the study for South Washington Street in terms of city plan, public improvements, and in what ways can those be coordinated and especially timed with the proposed development so that we can make sure that there could be an economy of scale there in, for in terms of providing for some of the transportation improvements. So all of those are still under consideration or review with staff as the application is further refined.
Okay, and then I think both the ESC, the Environmental Services Council, and the EDA talked a lot about facilities for bike, but it seems to me that you guys are gonna have lockers, you're going to have racks. It looked like most of the things they want are actually in the project, so I think that's good. One of the things that I thought was interesting in the EDA's comments was that they wondered if we should have a public use easement for the park space. And I don't know, has staff looked at that? I know it's in the, sorry, in the, right. Oh, did you? I missed that, sorry. Because I know it's in the, in the list, the Gateway Park is listed in all of the different benefits we're gonna get, and that it would be open for public use. So is that, was that enough to make sure that it would be available for public use?
That should be, and I think there was also interest in having the developer maintain that as opposed to staff at Parks trying to maintain it. So it's a very common approach for these kinds of spaces built as a part of a specific project. And an easement for public use should be able to ensure that the public is there. And also, they may, as a part of the site plan, need to have kind of a more detailed rules and regs about how that space is used, that could be developed for its, for its use over time.
And I just have one more question on that.
I was just gonna add on to that.
On the, oh, do you want to add on to that?
No, no, no.
On the Architectural Advisory Board's comments, and sorry about, we've got all these up here, just as you guys just had them, so I don't know if you answered it. But the AAB was talking about that they're concerned about the connection between the retail on the west end of the property and the adjacent plaza. So I wonder if you just could talk to that for a minute? I didn't see a problem with the connection, but obviously they did. And you guys were at that meeting with them, and maybe you could talk to what their issue is or their concern. Is it just being able to get into the building on that end?
Yes, as you can see right now, the building comes down, you know, in a vertical line and meets the park, and there's no doorways or steps or patios or terraces. And we agree with them that a very strong connection between the park and the building would be incredibly important, and it's really just a matter of making sure we know exactly where the floodway line is. And one potential alternative that we've talked about as a team is actually, instead of steps or terrace projecting out into the park, which may not be allowed in the floodway, we would actually project into the building, you know, have it cut into the building with doorways and steps, so that all that's occurring within the context of the building footprint.
Because I, because my understanding from our last work session is that the bottom of those windows is actually the floor level. So there's definitely a big drop there, and so if you were gonna put something there, if it was handicap accessible, it almost would have to be like a ramp or something, so.
Well, we have a ramp, as a matter of fact, there is a ramp on the side of the building.
Oh, is it? Okay.
There's a ramp to be able to, you know.
Okay, and I guess.
Unfortunately, this is kind of more, this was really to kind of show the park, and the building's kind of more of a massing model, and we made a mistake by not dressing that up to show how that would interact, so.
No, and we understand that, I mean, you can't have, it takes time to get all those pieces together. And I would also guess that what the final use of that section is gonna really dictate more. Because when you were talking about doing it more of an arts space, you're actually talking about having it open up lots of it, so I'm sure that it dictates. Anyway, thank you.
I was just gonna add on to yours. The reason I asked about that is because the little park, the little plaza strip, not a park, up at Spectrum, in order for the city to use that, they have to go through the homeowners association, the condo association. And that can be a problem for the businesses using it. And so that was one of my main reasons for asking if the city had use of that.
Yeah, can you just clarify where the bike racks are gonna be on the external part of the building? I understand there's supposed to be some inside the building.
Right now, we're showing, for example, if you look just to the left of the South Maple Avenue label, there's a proposed bike rack within the streetscape amenity. And we've talked about also putting some in the park. Again, we have to confirm exactly where the floodway line is, and Wetlands is actually going to be doing that study. We just can't have any vertical elements in the park. So throughout the streetscape, there's another one to the left, just across from the Pearson Square, you know, entrance. So we're trying to make sure they're spaced regularly along the streetscape, and ideally would also have some in the park.
How about South Washington, though?
There's one down at the bottom, I see.
Right there with the grocery store?
So it, on South Washington and South Maple spaced around, and ideally in the park as well.
In addition to that, there was a request at one point to have an air station and a water fountain on this side of Maple, so that bikers that are going that way can have access to that, because I think there is a water fountain and an air station that's gonna be the transportation intermodal deal up on Washington.
Andy? Got nothing. Okay, so I think all of my stuff is site plan related, with the exception of this traffic light. And can you just, can we just clarify what traffic light is going in and whether it is actually a proffer or it is a condition of the development? And I ask specifically with regard to Broadway in Pennsylvania, which originally, the developer contributed in 2003, and then another developer contributed an equal amount of money in 2005. And I think we still don't have an actual traffic light located at that, that area. So because that was a citizen's comment, and my understanding is we have no shot at this during the site plan process, can you just sort of run through that?
The provision for having a light at Tenner and South Washington Street would be a voluntary concession, and it is featured currently in the latest draft provided by the applicant. As it's written, it is that the developer has agreed it will take the responsibility of installing the traffic light at Tenner Hill and South Washington Street, subject to a limit of $250,000. If the cost exceeds this amount, the city will be required to pay that additional cost. Originally, it's my recollection that the voluntary concession was for a monetary contribution that the city could use for installation, and that through working with council at the first public hearing, there was a request that the developer actually take a role in installing the light. Part of the concern, I believe, has to do with the cost. So it may be that there will be some additional discussion about what that voluntary concession ultimately says, but there has been some progress in terms of not only we're getting, not only the applicant will be working to install it, the issue of the cost and the city maybe having to partner in the cost for that is probably something that needs additional consideration. It's more than just money, and so the voluntary concession is installation, but it could be that if the city doesn't have the funds for the additional, to cover the additional cost, that could stall the installation of the light.
Well, all right, so without getting in the weeds here. It makes sense for the developer to install the light. They'll be doing the undergrounding in the streetscape. Sure. Undergrounding on the other side. And a modern traffic signal will need mast arms, underground services, boxes to control the traffic signal. So all of that needs to be engineered and built at one time. And I think that's why ultimately makes sense for them to do that work, so that it's not something that's trying to be retrofitted later by a third party. Well, so depending on whose version of this you believe, our nonexistent traffic light that's supposed to be on Broad, the issue was not necessarily financial. It was the engineering kept getting more complicated, and that the pedestrian crossing had to be raised, and it had, I mean, it was a, I mean, what we originally had as a cost, essentially because of city requirements, perhaps rightfully so, meant we now didn't have enough money. So I'm delighted that they're gonna build a traffic light, but are we making sure that we're going to actually get a traffic light based on what the engineering will be? Because presumably, it's not done, as it wasn't done in the Broad and Pennsylvania case. We will see more of the engineering in final site plan. And also, the staff is looking at improvements on South Washington Street. It's part of that ongoing study. There's a plan to put a light at Maple and Washington as well. And so we're encouraging their engineers and our engineers to work together to design this portion of South Washington Street so that these various things can be accomplished, along with the Intermodal Transit Plaza, which is a few hundred feet to the, up 29. All of these need to be coordinated in terms of their design. You're, I just, I, I like, I'm, it's so simple to me, and it becomes so complicated when you talk. I never understand the answer, when will there be a traffic light? So if I, if I had to put a date when the traffic light would actually be there, that date will be.
We do not have that date.
When the grocery store opens, the traffic light must function.
Okay.
There we are, thank you.
There we go.
We like those kind of answers.
Okay.
Can I just ask real quick?
We'll have to put that in the voluntary concession as well. I mean, because that's the only way we could secure that, so we'll have to amend the concession to include that detail.
Well, can I?
Because I just read you all that I have.
Well, so it sounds like a potential scenario is it gets engineered, and it doesn't cost $250,000, it costs $700,000, and the city says, I'm just saying, this sounds like what happened before, it was before my time. And the city says, we don't have that money, so the developer says, well, we're not gonna build it, and then it won't have light, so. And then the grocery doesn't open, which doesn't help anybody. But I guess, how does one get an estimate on the cost of the traffic? Is it about $250,000, or?
It's about $250,000 is the typical cost of one of these.
Can we request a memo from Mr. Hicks, or just a ballpark of what he thinks it's gonna cost? And can we expect at site plan to have him maybe attend one of the work sessions and explain to us where they are on the engineering? That way, we would have a idea.
I definitely think this is a topic for more further, further discussion as you get into the site plan. But, but I thought this was not a site plan issue, the traffic, the traffic light. The ultimate design is, the voluntary concession is that, as it's written at this point, is that they will construct it and they put a price tag on it. We're also gonna be going forward to city council, who'll have some additional time to work on that cost estimate, and it's how appropriate it is, given the problem. So this is a point in time, I guess, with the voluntary concessions, we'll be having further discussions about these, this proposal. Well, the reason that I, okay, so just so it's on the record, what I think generally speaking, if I were a resident in that area, whether it's at Pearson Square or Tenner Hill, I would be very interested in what the pedestrian connection's on, which we had a reference to a study. Oh, this is exciting, in the city of Falls Church, another study! Which means, we all know what will happen, that we won't have a design plan on the pedestrian works for a period of time. So we won't have a budget, so to tie it to the grocery store, that's all I need. That's, that's awesome. Okay, so here were my site plan related issues, seen in a couple of things. We don't have to do it now. Obviously, the materials of the building are particularly important. Ms. Rogers had a couple of questions, all related essentially to the materials of the building, and essentially, architecture and site plan related stuff. Also related to the gateway features, so again, I think that sounds like a site plan related issue. The, the only other one that I had, well, I had one, which was the handicap access, which we talked about in the parking garage and some of the sort of specifics as it related to the parking and the access. I would, access to the restaurant. I would draw your attention to the north gate, where the handicap access in what I'm sure was an oversight actually is to go about 200 yards, and we walked it out from the parking garage around to the front of the building, because in the back of the building, there are steps down into the space. I'm sure that was just an oversight, but so we will be looking at that again at site plan. The last issue, I would say, is number nine in the voluntary concession is commercial spaces and portico retail spaces. You know, it seems to me that what the city is really looking for is more of a commitment, and I understand the fiscal impact, and that's not the direction that I'm coming at from this perspective. You know, from, from the perspective of making this good retail usable space, what I would rather see, without getting in the weeds at this point, but is actually to get shafts, to actually get the shafts in what is deemed to be sort of the prime restaurant space, as opposed to the ability to put, in other words, I don't think it does it a lot of good to have chases in all of the commercial space. I would rather actually see a shaft in what we deem to be the prime retail space as a trade-off. We may have some. some, some give and take on that issue, but it seems to me, um, that putting dishwasher and, and vent hoods in a 350 square foot space, um- I don't know what we would end up with.
Well, in the portico space, or you're talking about in the blue stuff?
I, I don't care if you vent. I, I, I don't think we're gonna do a full-service restaurant in the portico space. I, I don't think that we need a vent. Well, if I read this, it says, shaft for future restaurant cooking and dishwasher exhaust, so provided in each commercial space. I, I would strike that, and say, we want an actual black iron vent in, you know, again, 5,000, the way we have done this in the past is a gross square footage of restaurant, if you have-
We're done. We're done.
Okay.
That's the intent.
All right. Well, that's not what it says. So it's fine. All right. Questions, comments? Witty, off-color story. Um, okay.
I thought you were supposed to be-
Um, if there's no further ado, uh, I would entertain a motion.
Okay. I will-
You gonna try it?
I'm gonna give you a motion. We, we did not get a staff write-up for our motion, so I'm doing it on the fly. Okay. Which does not help Ms. G, who has to write down what I say. Okay. I move that the planning commission recommend to the city council that TR-13-07 Resolution to amend the comprehensive plan of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, to change the designation of approximately 2.2 acres of land located at 540 and 580 South Washington Street, from business to mixed use on a city's future land use map. And TR-13-06 Resolution to grant a special exception for residential development and hype bonus for a mixed use development on the approximately 2.2 acres of land located at 540 and 580 South Washington Street, known as Reserve at Tanner Hill by Lincoln Property Company, be approved by the city council upon second reading.
Boy, that was good.
I only took three breaths.
Second? Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, moved and seconded. Any comments? Discussion?
I just wanted to say, you know, no, no, uh, development is perfect surrounding neighborhoods, especially one of this size. But in general, um, this development does have my strong support, based on, really, its unique location in the city. And it does, I believe, have , uh, limited impact on the residential areas in the city. Has a sort of island-esque quality that's bordering on two large streets. Really appreciative to see the underground parking, that's a big thing for me, and, and what I think the future direction of the city needs to be with its development. Um, and I think it's gonna do a, a lot to fight a lot, make that, that area more vital, um, and, and bring along an area that, uh, its current use is, uh, underserving our city, both financially and, uh, in, in all aspects, honestly. So, I, this, this development, while there's a few tweaks that might happen at site plan, or I'd like to see happen in terms of movement of, of people and cars and things like that, uh, overall, I think it's, it's a well-placed development with, um, a, a, a promise of having, um, tenants, uh, right from the beginning. So, uh, I will be supporting this motion.
Looking at me, huh? No, I actually do agree with, with my colleague.
Keep.
Yeah. And, um, I do think that the project ha- holds a lot of promise, and so I'm actually very supportive of it. So, thank you.
I'm happy to. And I have to say, when we knew the, um, property, the SAB dealership was in play, there was a lot of concern in the city about what would happen there.
You betcha.
And, um, this is much better than a lot of other thoughts that we had that could happen. And so, I'm really appreciative of the project that's, that's really come about and evolved over time. It's, it's, you know, I don't know if people realize, it's really has changed a lot from the very beginning. Um, and I do hope that the neighbors come to find it to be valuable. Valuable to have lights, so you can actually cross the street and get out of the adjoining streets. Um, I hope they appreciate, have a small grocery store nearby, that they can walk to. Um, to have services, to have restaurants. I think that we already have some very great restaurants there, with Elevation Burger, with, um, um, all the little-
Orzo.
Pizzeria Orzo, and Blancas. And there's a lot of little Super Chicken. If you guys have never been to Super Chicken, you need to go there. And, um, it just, it's already a, a place that we go a lot to eat. And I, I, I'm looking forward to seeing it be enriched. And I think more restaurants will bring more people walking in that area. And so I, I just see a lot of benefit there. Um, I hope that the residents around it feel the benefits, and, and that they're out there walking over there, going to the grocery store and using the restaurants.
Could I just add one thing? Hey Kurt, it's not that we don't like looking at SABs. And that is really, it is a, and it really is a very pretty dealership, okay? And, and the buil- the building is very attractive and everything else like that. But, uh, we keep going around saying, oh, it's better than what's there now. And I know you gotta feel like, ah! So- You know, and Midas, yeah. But, I just wanted to throw that in, you know. You know, that property's always been kept really, really well.
I didn't say anything about the current. I said, would it could be.
Well, it could have been. And, yes, it definitely could have been. Of course, this hunk of property's been long fought over. And the city, way back when, uh, Heckinghurst burned down, and what was gonna go there. And, oh, there had been some doozy of ideas. Could've gotten a mini Walmart, or something other like that.
Um, y- you know, this is not the time or place. I have, um, couldn't be more frustrated, and that's probably not even a strong enough word, with the process this has gone through. It has been, um, I, I love living in the city of Falls Church, and I have been, really, quite frankly, embarrassed by the, um, very undemocratic, almost hunter-like style that this has gone through. I am really happy, in, in all seriousness. Um, you know, I'm not a meetings guy, and if I were running this meeting, we'd probably wrap this up in about 20 minutes. But I'm so happy that we actually had people from the public, and we kind of got this out, um, you know, to talk about it in the, in the traditional way that Falls Church does things. You know, we, we've sort of gotten off that with this, um, you know, kind of almost like cabal that, that wants to take over what I think is a very democratic and open process that we normally have. Or, my challenge was, I've, I've always liked this project. I think this is a terrific project. I, I looked forward, and am looking forward to seeing it get built and, and get done. And so really, our, our dilemma was, you know, we're put in this, this kind of terrible position. We either had to vote sort of against it. So, I've taken a long way around to say, I want to thank the developer for his patience, because, um, this is hard to be one of the crappiest ways of doing business, that I think probably, uh, has been done in a long time.
That's Nick.
Uh, so without any further ado, uh, and before I say something, it will really get me in trouble. Uh, perhaps we should call a question.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Bodisca?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other business. Is that, we have no-
Ready to go to work session?
So, I, I- I have one other point of other business. Is, so are we, I understand that, um, the city attorney has written a legal opinion, or there is a legal opinion, um, justifying what happened on South Van Buren. Will we ever see that? Will that ever become a document that comes to the planning commission?
Let me check with him. I did ask and mention to you-
North Van Buren.
Would be useful to have a, a meeting with him. And, uh, I will ask him if we can't do that. I think it is always useful to have those face-to-face discussions. Um, so I'll convey that to him.
Okay.
Yeah.
And perhaps we could, um, my understanding right now is that the city attorney says that that document is a client-privileged document for the council only. So maybe, we could ask the council if they'd like to share it with us. Because, um, it, he suggests, Mr. Foster suggested, we'd like to see it, that the council would be the ones that need to release it, 'cause it's their document. And it's client-privileged.
All right.
You know, in the interest of, um, the democratic process that my colleague here has, um, wants the, us to pursue, I think we should ask the city attorney to come to the planning commission, and formally answer questions about, um, about the, you know, the issue of the Van Buren Street. Um, so, I'd like to formally invite, um, the attorney to come in and talk to us. Can you arrange that for us?
I, I certainly will. I will speak with him, and, um, we'll see if we can't set that up.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I so move.
I'll second.
Uh, all those in, um, approved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motions are, or the minutes are approved. Um, and now, I'm not here to do it.
Oh, shuck.
Motion to adjourn. Where's my second? Come on.
Oh, a second.
Second. All right.
I hear you.
We are adjourned.